Okay, let's call the Tuesday, May 2, 2017 meeting of the Acton School Committee to order at this time. And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
I'll ask Mr. Rosna, give us any adjustments that you may have for the agenda or anything that he needs to say to us?
We do, just an opening comment that the buildings really holding on all around the grounds look fantastic. Thank you to Andy, his crew, and the Green Club. I think at this point, I think we're out of the woods with smell. And it's looking like spring at AES, and I'm very pleased at how everything's coming together. So, big thanks to the Green Club, big thanks to Andy and the crew for getting that done. Also, if anybody who's out there listening to us or will see this wants to stop by the book fair this week, Jen Goodman has been doing a phenomenal job of getting our library ready for the Spring Scholastic Book Fair. And the theme is camping, so bring your marshmallows and hot chocolate and sleeping bag into the school and enjoy Scholastic Book Fair. With that, there is one adjustment to the agenda under new business. I'd like to take the budget process, which is listed as 622.1, and call it 62.2. And the new 62.1 will be called Fund Balance Policy Article, and Kim will walk us through that when we get to new business. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the public? And then let's move on to the consent agenda, and I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda as printed in your packets. Been moved and seconded that the consent agenda be approved? Any discussion? Eric, now, am all those in favor? Okay, anybody have any questions about any of the administrative reports in the consent agenda?
I do, now I'm gonna find them. Oh, Kim mentioned new policy changes. Is there anything major there? Like what can be changed? I feel like nothing can be changed.
Yeah. So basically, when tomorrow, I believe we would part of the first, a key person, because it's a little bit of a moment. And the anthem has made a few changes for several couple of minutes. And then that's, you know, that whole happen starting July 1st. So when I meet with everybody tomorrow, I do have their new voice and employees' faces.
And whatever, Jim.
I just was like. Well, something to call the change of our, you know, basically the logistics is really kind of difficult not go for a version in a necessary emergency. And there's a difference between regular versus contract, so, you know, things like that. And then the change, this is a contract change, they're gonna pay a little more and so on, there'll be something else to make. So it's a good balance.
Just one other question, you said something about the paperwork that was now gotten rid of, whatever paperwork that was. You're talking years and years ago of papers that were taken away?
We, I believe it is. We had everything from normal moves and said, hey, six years, let's just keep this, we have to keep all, you know, school.
Right, what you have to keep by law, but have we scanned stuff and kept stuff? So like, if there's something from 20 years ago we can look at and look back at, or no?
The stuff that we disposed of were like old time reference, you know, for how to keep track of, you know, sick days. We don't have to keep those where you're. We found things in drawers that actually can sense in the way that we're there. We even found some little rust cars from year to year. It's always wondering, it was like, what years ago and they disappeared, we didn't know where they happened to be. You know, something like that. What was done was, and this was, everything now is labeled, you know, all of the books are labeled, they're all in order. The cloud cabinets, we labeled all the cloud cabinets, all the journals, all the spreadsheets.
I know, but can we scan and keep it on a little USD, you know, instead of having cloud cabinets, you know, type of thing?
Okay, well, you know, like right now, everything for the last four years in our system is all electronic. Me first, all the same, you see.
Right, right.
We do keep track, we keep hold of that. We might as well, we got the community, we got the backup system. When I give things to the auditors now, everything is on electronic. So we are cutting back on a lot of paper, but we are printing lots of actual documents. So the final budget, that's probably. So things that are completely necessary.
I was just, you know, I didn't get your email, these questions, and so now, thank you very much. Nicole, can, I don't know if you can give me the numbers now, but like K to 2, how many kids are just in speech? You know what I mean, because when you see those numbers, when you see the numbers, you know, you see 10 in kindergarten, you know, I'm sure some are speech only. Well, just, I was gonna say, K to 2 is usually heavy in the speech, so I was just wondering, out of the 17 children, how many of them are speech only? Good for you.
And more than that, speech, speech only?
Yeah. Just curious. Grand seat, not kidding.
That was good, Mary.
I do have a question for you, Grand seat. The Empower essay for grades 3 to 8, is that new, is that something they've done?
It's new this year.
It's new, and what does that entail for the kids?
Students three, they're required, they have seven minutes in class, so they're going to promise that we can be trained as they're at a minute narrative, and to be a teacher, you know, which I probably will label that. And I haven't responded to that part. And it's just my time, 6 through 8, they have six minutes, and then every time they turn, they have to enter ten hours units. And we have six, so two, I suppose, part of it, because I have no idea how long's it take them to get any short results to us.
Is it just for the state or is it a federal?
State.
The state.
Part of the MEA, it's an additional assessment this year in general, not specifically, but in general, we take our MEAs historically in March, and we get our results in October. With this additional SAPs, I'm not sure if that's gonna push it back in calendar year. Mary, if I could, just want to comment earlier about the electronic scanning of documents. That might be something we speak to in the Long Range Planning Committee seriously, because what's here that has been cut off and thrown away, what's left we need to keep, but the question is, do we need to keep it as hard paper copies or not? And then moving forward, what I heard Kim say is, over the last four years, we've been sort of doing electronic copy anyway. So we're good four years ago moving forward, but some of the stuff goes way back. So Long Range Planning Committee, great place to have that discussion.
Yes, Kim.
Part of the drumming is hard, is what, there are certain things that have to stand.
Great. And what do you have in the 3K people coming here?
Come on, step up there.
Are there any clues or conundrums?
We are at, right now, my best number is 16. 16 3K kids for next year, of course, that could change come August.
Usually does, isn't it? You have those surprises. Okay, any other questions about the administrative reports? Then let's move on to committee reports, so we'll start with the policy committee. And we have a first read on the student wellness policy.
Mary, I guess has a question.
I have a question.
Second page.
Well, let me place the third page, it's the appointment and role of the wellness committee. Is this a school committee shall appoint the wellness committee? I'm just wondering if that's correct.
We should say the superintendent appoints.
Can you help me where that language is again, second page?
Third page.
Third page.
Yep, it's under the first block letter.
Under appointment and role of the.
Sure, I think as far as the policy goes, it's written that the school committee, probably the way I read this, the way this would work, is I pull the committee together, I report it out to you in a school committee meeting, so it becomes something that the school committee is aware of and blesses, so to speak. But there won't be any duty on you to actually go find somebody, that's really on me.
No, but I mean, you know, the way it was worded, since the school.
Maybe we could just put something like, the school committee will approve the appointment of?
I think that's the way it originally was, but we can change the words.
We could, we could make it superintendent, I mean, it's really, we didn't really play much with that one particular line.
Appoint sounds like we have to vote on it or something.
Yeah, it does, doesn't it?
Right.
Many words.
Well, we have to vote on the whole policy, so.
Do you want to just change that, the superintendent or designee shall appoint a school what?
Sounds good.
All right, I'm making that change. Superintendent or designee.
And you can now send the wellness policy?
Not for me.
No. Open up.
I just wanted to realize that this is a first reading, because it's replacing the A D B old wellness policy. And the reason is because the legislature says that our wellness policy is for students specifically. And this is why this is.
Okay.
I'd like to thank Kevin and Jeanette for spending the extra time on this as well, and Mary for her pointed comments about two weeks ago that helped us go back to this policy, because it was a, clearly, I've worked at the policy committee every month this year, and this one was very muddled and it's very clear now, so thanks, guys, good work.
All right, another motion to accept student wellness code JL as a policy for a first reading. It's been moved and seconded that we accept students wanting to follow the JL for a first reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Stuff to sign in, I just didn't know if that was for this or something else.
Now we're gonna move on to maybe number six, which is new business. And we'll start with 6.1, alternative classroom teacher.
Sure, if I could speak to that for a moment, we talked about the process and our candidate. It became very evident as we moved into the third trimester that we had a handful of students, then primarily non-special education students, kids without IUDs, that were still struggling and making good choices with their own behavior, primarily at kindergarten through fourth grade. And as we near the end of the school year, as I said, it became evident that these students are struggling with making good choices, that a decision was made to, for the last eight weeks of school, develop what we call an alternative classroom, primarily for non-special ed students. That doesn't mean that special ed students couldn't still access that, we could, you know, make amendments to kids' IUDs if they wanted to or needed to access the special, alternative learning classroom. This is purely in place as a respite for kids to work on both their academics and behavior, and a respite for teachers as well as we on the end of the school year. I'll tell you, I think it's been a great year, I've had a lot of great feedback. It's been a good year, and we still have some students who struggle as we look at our RTI process and change up as much as we can for them to be successful. So I'm happy to announce that we advertised a position for just the last eight weeks of the school year. We had an internal candidate who's an ed tech named Sally Puffer. Sally is a certified teacher. She came to us as an ed tech about two and a half months ago. And she's thrilled to be working with a small handful of kids, we're using the conference room when we need to. A lot of the brick in this experiential base, so we're out in the community, out in the back fields and grounds. And we have some kids that spend part of the day with her, we have one student spending most of the day with her, and I've already seen the results. In the classrooms in which those students are in, the classroom is as much, is a much more homogeneous learning environment, let's just say right now. So we're hoping in the last eight weeks of school year in the home stretch, we have a chance to really target some kids. These would be, as you understand, PBIS, probably tier three kids. We've tried different solutions, but at the end of the year, this seems to be the solution that's gonna work for them. And get them where they need to be to start school in the fall or August. So Sally Puffer is our candidate, she will be, she with your vote would start at a BA step zero, at $34,357, which is prorated, so really that's the yearly base rate for the position, but only for eight weeks, starting May 1st, as discussed, okay?
Any questions about that position, I know we talked about it. If not, then I look for a motion to approve the appointment of Sally.
Puffer.
Puffer, as an alternative teacher for the remaining of the school year. And make it, you can make it. I'm just looking for the motion.
Okay.
You wanna make the motion?
Whatever you said, go ahead.
You make that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Jeanette moved it, anybody wanna second it?
I just wanna amend it to say how much, so step zero, $34,357 for eight weeks, prorated to eight weeks.
So we put all that in?
And start May 1st.
And do what?
Start May 1st.
Start May 1st.
Which was.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we appoint Sally Puffer as the alternative teacher as outlined in the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? Now we'll move on to 6.2.1, and for this one, we're looking at a fund balance policy article.
I'm gonna ask Kim to explain, I'll pass it out to each of the board members, and this is Kim's article to explain.
So this article, it's the same article you voted on last year. And what it does is that it says that if we have funds beyond our range and our amount policy, that those funds would be set back to the amount of offset taxes.
Just for the June town meeting?
It's the exact same one you had last year, this is a yes/no question, it's not, you won't go, you know, the lack of the auditors.
What are you gonna vote on?
We're gonna vote.
So we'll look for a vote for, for the new town meeting as an article, as just read that thing.
But we, we don't give them an amount in June even, it's not until July or August.
This is just saying that yes, it's allowing the town to accept the money.
Right.
And you need to have a, so that it's not giving them an amount, it's just saying that if we have excess money, the order from those policies that that would be set back to the amount of offset taxes.
So then the warrant and finance, they have to vote on that too, probably, this article?
Maybe before the June meeting. It would be only June, it would be only June warrant. No, probably not.
Okay.
I don't think anybody's gonna say, no, we don't want that money back. So then we're looking for motion on an article to be in the June town meeting, June warrant for the town meeting, to see if the town of Acton will authorize the transfer of excess funds from the school's undesigned fund balance to offset taxes, contingent on the Acton School Department Fund Balance Policy, and then doing a surplus at the end of the fiscal year.
So moved, none of that.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? All right, and that brings us to 621, 622, I mean, which is the informational meeting on the FY 1718 budget. We advertised this at 6:30, so by the time we kinda gets ourselves straightened around, we'll recess for a few minutes, and then we'll begin with the budget meeting, which is that.
Okay, at 6:30. Well, everybody, thank you for coming out tonight for the informational meeting on the Acton School Department 2017-18 budget. Kim and I again present about a 18 to 19-page PowerPoint presentation. Our goal is to go through each one of the slides, if you have any questions, certainly feel free to answer questions on each slide, and then of course, to the very end, we'll go back to any slide you wanna see. So you don't have to ask when we pull up a slide, you can hold it at the end if you want. There are operating budget booklets here that's very, very detailed, where each one of these articles that we look at is spelled out here in the budget book if you need it. Wanted to say thank you to the warrant finance committee that worked with the school committee, and thank you to the school committee for work well done. This is my first budget as superintendent, principal of the Acton School Department. I've been very pleased with the process so far. What you see here is when we first started collecting the information, it actually goes prior to December. Kim met with all the teachers and staff and really started finding out what their needs were back at Thanksgiving. And we're one week away from the town vote on the school budget. There are the days when we met, and we've had several really good workshops with warrant finance for the school committee, and it was well done, so many thanks to this Acton School Committee and Acton Warrant and Finance Committee for me.
So the first article that we looked at was Article 2. Our article school budget is actually split up into 12 different articles. But Article 2 incorporates all our regular and secondary instruction. So it includes all our teachers from pre-K to grade 8. It includes all our ed techs, all the benefits that go with them, so group insurances, workers comp, all of those. Our high school tuition center, our supplies, our textbooks, our software, staff development, field trips, everything to make our school give kids the best education out of the county. So this year, our total request for Article 2 is $2,726,501. And if you look in our, the budget booklet that is up here on the table, you're gonna see each one of these articles, what we're budgeting for, what we budgeted last year, what our increase is or decrease, and then percentage of the increase or decrease. So with regular and secondary instruction, we did have an increase of $253,000, which is about a 10.24% increase. Does anybody have any questions about Article 2 that they might want to ask? We actually have two more teachers, and we also were adding a foreign language teacher this year, and those are incorporated in this, in this budget.
And that also would include?
Increase in.
An increase in insurance?
Yes, our health insurance increased by 8.10, almost 10%. And if you, just so you can, if you really wanna see the details of each budget, each article, so Article 2, you'll see each line item, like teacher salary, ed techs, so your second line is a new full-time foreign language teacher. Ed tech salary substitutes, everything all the way right down through, so you know exactly what we are purchasing with each line item.
And it also includes the contractual raise, it's supposed to be staff that were, other than she, correct?
Yeah, this is all based on, we are in our second year of three-year contracts for both the professional staff, which is all the teachers, and the support staff, which is all the ed techs, custodians, cafeteria, everybody that we've hired.
We'll leave this article as approximately 50% of our total budget, is that correct? It is 50%, so this is the lion's share of AES's regular instruction, our staff. Yeah, I'll take the next one.
Yep.
Article 3, yeah, special education. So in Article 3, special education, this includes all aspects of special education, and students that have diagnosed learning disabilities or social disabilities through IDEA, federal law, and we need to change up how we support those students according to their individual plan. So within special education, we have the teachers and the ed techs, as well as supplies, the insurance and benefits for those teachers. Kim, with tuition, you're talking about out-of-district placement tuition?
Yes.
Yeah, so tuition, where you see the line tuition, that may be students who are going to special purposes schools where we cannot meet their needs here at Acton Elementary, staff development, as well as our extended school year for special education students, and that summer transportation. The total request this year is 940,484, and if you look at that page with the articles spelled out, you'll see that that's actually down 107,000, or down 10%. So we started that we were up just 10%, but with the next article, we're down 10%, so we're about to flat budget it into our second article at this point. And the reason for the increase primarily is?
A lot of, in this year, we had budgeted for students that were extremely high needs that would have had out-of-district tuition with out-of-district ed tech one-on-one service and the out-of-district transportation. And a couple of these students had moved from this district, so they had gone to a different district, so we did not have that cost anymore. When you, when we look at what might be left over for this upcoming year, the bulk of it will be coming from special education.
Any questions on that particular article, on the one we fielded? Okay?
Contractic services would include?
Speech. Yes, speech, psychological services, speech services, occupational therapy services. The only service that we did not budget for this, in this upcoming year, is for physical therapy, because we do not have any IUDs that include it. We've actually figured out what our contract would be based on our current needs with our current students. Yep.
Going back to the health insurance, are you locked in to the price? Or can it vary?
No, they've come in with their final numbers, and we know exactly where Acton is. We were on the higher end of the tier system because of our, what the school had for expenses exceeded what our premiums that we had paid in, so therefore we ended up in the higher bracket. They are locked in, what we have in this budget is exactly what's gonna cost us for our medical insurance.
And Mark, good question, Mark, we just got that information recently. We were working with the warrant finance and the school committee right up until our last meeting, and then Kim and I got the information from our insurance provider what our rates are going to be for this fiscal year coming up, okay?
So the next side is Article 5, which is what we call other instructions. So this is, this covers our co-curricular activities and our extra athletic activities. So includes everything from our coaches, our referees for sports, so we have, we have baseball, the basketball, we have soccer, and we have, what's the second? Soccer, basketball, baseball, oh, softball. So that's for the athletics, and then for our co-curricular, we have our Legos team, which we have in the spring and the fall, we have math team. We have math team, we have Odyssey of the Mind, we've done spelling bees, social study bees. So we have a lot of different, or writing club, or green clubs. We have a lot of different activities that our kids can do at first school and for athletics. So this article, which is forty-eight thousand seven hundred thirty-five, which pretty much is only a two thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollar increase from last year, so it's about six point two five percent increase overall for this particular line and for sports. And namely, the bulk of the increases cost due to field trip transportation, they've gone up a little bit, and some of our operating costs. Any questions about Article Five?
One more of a sec. So Article Six is listed as student staff support, which includes our social worker, our nurse, our instructional post, librarian, IT director, you could see as they come right through, with software programs and staff development. It's kind of all those pieces that are non-instructional to support students. And this year, the total request is for five hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-nine, and that's an increase of just over two percent from last year.
Do they have any questions on Article Six? Mainly, you know, most of its benefits.
I think there may be a software package.
And that, yeah, there's a couple different software programs, but not, you know, really not who are, mainly it's just general stuff that.
Okay, you want to take the next one, Kim?
So Article Seven, Article Seven is basically central office, so that's the school committee, secretary of the school committee, superintendent, the business office, group insurances and benefits in there, purchase professional services, so legal and audit, and office supplies, checks, you know, checks, purchase orders, type of stuff. Our total request is one hundred ninety-nine six seventy-five, and that is a decrease of seventeen thousand seven sixty-nine, or an eight point one seven percent decrease from last year. Does anybody have any comments about that?
The basic reason for that, were there a couple items that stood out on that?
The basic reason for that is we moved, we had a bookkeeper, we did not fill the position, and I mean, had gone from being a bookkeeper, self-caller type person to front office secretary, Amanda moved to California, and really just felt that we could handle everything within where we were.
So that's also going to show up in the next article that I'll talk about, which is school administration. So with the combined superintendent, principal position, when the district decided to do that last year, that, it used to be one and a half people, now it's one person, so there's a cost savings to the district right there. And within that, one of the things that I recognize working with Kim is, is I'm one person, whereas you had one and a half before, and the one and a half people had people that worked with that. I'm one and a half people, whether I, no matter where I stand in the building, it's just me, so I don't need two people to work with me. So when there was an opportunity to have Ily come over to the opening of the school as the school secretary, that left a void in central office. I moved over to the school office, and it just made sense that those extra duties could be assigned to existing staff, so we basically eliminated that position as well, which is, it just makes sense because it's a combined position now. So it's really twofold, there's two things. Which brings us right into the school administration, because that kind of sit in both areas, which is the principal, the front office staff, the group insurance and telephone supplies to run the school. And that Article Eight is down just a bit, one point five seven percent, or about almost two thousand dollars. So that's kind of a combined reason why Article Seven and Eight are both down, because it's combined, and we didn't fill one.
Is this the benefits, or is this still listed as a line item for superintendent and principal?
Has that just broken up?
Sorry, what?
The benefits are listed as both principal and, because they're in two different cost centers, so they're broken up?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, the benefits for the superintendent, principal, fifty percent is in Article Seven and fifty percent is in Article Eight.
Transportation, Kim, you're going to want to talk a little bit, I hope, to the contract and how transportation this year is set up.
Basically, with Legmere, we are in our first year of a three-year contract. This is the first year we actually have had pre-K as part of the students on the bus. Last year, pre-K was brought in by parents. This year, Legmere has, they take care of our pre-K kids, including having specific car seats for them, and they usually have, we work with some of the older kids to be like bus monitors to help buckle the kids in and help with their community service as far as that goes. So basically, this covers for five buses for every day of the school year, both to the high school and to the elementary school. We also have a little bit of money in there for homeless students, so sometimes you have a student that might be from Acton that becomes homeless, they end up going to another school that they want to, or in another town, but they want to come back to Acton. So we work with whatever school that, or whatever area they're in, and split the costs to get them to come to Acton, okay? So that, total request for that contract is two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, which is an increase of twelve thousand dollars from last year. And basically, like I said, it's more to cover the extra work we have with pre-K, and there's some in there about, I think there's about twenty-five hundred in there for homeless students.
Just want to footnote on transportation, that's for our regular school transfer to the high school and the elementary runs. Any field trips or required busing are really not within this article, it's within the field trip budgets that the teachers presented to us in the fall. Each teacher needs to speak with Kim and I about the field trips they want to take that are connected to the curriculum. A lot of them occur in the spring, I noticed, a lot of field trips in the spring, those are budgeted in a different article than this particular article.
So the next article is Article Ten.
Sure, so Article Ten is, is the real visible pieces to our school, where we're sitting here in the gym and the beautiful buildings and grounds coming in. That's inclusive of maintenance salaries, group insurance for those people that work in that department, technical services, repairs, maintenance, supplies, electricity, fuel, oil, equipment, for a total request, request of four hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred eighty-seven. And within the operations, maintenance budget, that is an increase of eight point three seven percent, or roughly thirty-six thousand dollars in that particular article. Any particular questions about that, operations and maintenance? I'm sure between Kim and Andy, we could probably riddle it right down to the penny.
Something just for the audience, could you reiterate how much the school district pays for high school students so that we continue to do high school education with our students?
So you want to know how much it is for a high school student to go to school?
How much are we charged? A state subsidy amount, it's ten, ten thousand something.
Yeah, um, let me just scroll over. That's actually, the details for that is in Article Two, and if you go right to, okay, the line down for high school tuition. Secondary education, high school is ten thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars per student, which is basically the average for the main DOE tuition rate for public secondary schools.
Okay, how many students go into?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six?
Yep.
The other question I'd add for the audience is, which you reiterated again, what is if our budget is in fact not frozen, but has already been dictated by contractual negotiations and by federal and state requirements especially?
Okay, well, basically, what is under contract are both the, the salaries, which you'll see already is more than fifty percent, okay? So we have salaries, we have contract with the bus company, we have a contract with special ed, you know, with our contracted services.
High school tuition.
High school tuition.
And high school tuition.
There's a pie chart at the, coming up real soon, and fifty percent is regular instruction, so I'm going to venture to guess while I look at that pie chart, we're looking at seventy, eighty percent are probably locked-in costs, so that was your question?
Yes.
Right, non-barriers, they're locked in directly.
Yeah, yeah, our food services.
Most of what we do.
Yeah, there's play business contracted, yeah. And a lot of it too, sometimes our specialized is contracted, and a lot of times, that has saved us a lot of money in the long run, and nobody's food service as a really good example for what we pay versus having a full-time person in is substantially less than it would be if we had to actually hire somebody who looked back at it, so. Cost sharing with other schools is something we do kind of look at.
Any questions on operations, can we move to the next one, which is school nutrition? Okay, we'll move to school nutrition.
Well.
Oh, debt service.
Debt service, that's an article that, there is no money. Oh, the other one that's not in here is career.
Parent tech debt, which there is no, there is no debt, so we have no, no debt to school on that one.
So Article Twelve is nutrition, that covers our two cafeteria workers and their benefits. The purchase services, like we said, is our shared person or director with, that we share with Sanford High School. The food for the nutrition program, the supplies, so the sporks and that type of straws, napkins, repairs to, the dishwasher repairs to, sometimes we have to get stove fakes, you know, stuff like that. And the total request for that is one thirty-seven seven fifty-six, which is a, an increase of eight thousand two sixty-nine, which is about six point three nine percent. And most of that is that we pay a little bit more this year for our purchase services. We increase food by about three percent and our just contracted salaries.
Kim, how much should it pay for your first party here?
How much would it cost per student meal versus a adult meal?
I know how much it is for an adult, because I spent that at twenty-five cents, because I pay that. I, I want to say it's, I think it's a dollar seventy, I, you know what, I'd have to ask every, I'm not positive.
You have to ask, yeah.
I'm just curious.
Sure.
Breakfast and lunch bill?
You serve breakfast.
Yep, some kids can get breakfast, and, yeah, they can either get breakfast if they want, and then they can get lunch. We have a lot of kids that have breakfast in the morning, and they have really long day.
You got it. Alright, I think we should, are we looking at the revenue names?
Well, this is our overall.
Budget overall.
Yeah.
So really, what Kim did, she did a nice job, she took each one of the articles that we just went over, and really presented this as a pie graph. For a total expenditures, we added each one of these Warren articles at five million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. So that's kind of our starting point, and we're going to look at how other revenues offset this, but this is what the total operations budget would be for the Acton School Department. And as you can see, it is fifty percent is regular instruction. Article Five is just their regular instruction with teacher salaries, benefits.
And the high school tuition.
And the high school tuition, thank you.
Hello, thank you, Amy. Amy just looked at my prices for lunch, thank you. So for breakfast, students pay a dollar, adults pay a dollar twenty-five. For lunch, students pay two fifty, or forty cents if it's reduced, and adults, I knew, pay four dollars and twenty-five cents. And milk is thirty cents, and juice is thirty cents, so. They're not, that's, that's pretty reasonable. You have seven cents?
I think so, yeah, it's just a total of everything.
So then we go into the revenues, so these revenues are what actually offset our expenditure. So the previous slide had your total for expenditures for our school budget, and then, so now we're going to calculate our revenues that we will, that come in from other sources besides taxation to offset this budget. So we know from the ED two seventy-nine, it's still preliminary, but our amount for the state subsidy is one ninety-two oh twenty-one. The state aid, this covers foster children and other things like that that we might have out of districts and other areas. So I, this is a new area that's been coming through this year, and I know just based on revenues, we should give us sixty thousand dollars in state agency funding. We, we get about eighty thousand in federal reimbursements for nutrition, so that's where the eighty thousand is. And then we will be transferring from our fund balance two hundred and fifty thousand to bring our total estimate revenues of four eighty-two oh twenty-one. This is the amount that we're going to use to offset our operating budget request. And so, and basically, so there's your general front of probation, so that's how much we're requesting, the five million four fifty-nine nine sixty-two, less the estimated revenues that you saw on the previous page of five eighty-two oh twenty-one. Amount to be raised by taxes is four million eight seventy-seven nine forty-one, which is a point two six percent increase over last year. So it's pretty much, we try and keep it as a flat budget as much as possible.
With the present situation in Washington, have you been notified of the federal money being, that is clear, have you heard anything?
No, we, as far as the, the federal budget is, is an October budget, and the state budget is a July budget. So the, the one that we would hear first, if there were any changes, would be in the state budget, which the previous slide gave us about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of state subsidy. Some of that money that comes through the state is also pass-through money from the feds, so I don't suspect we're going to hear from the federal government, usually that comes right out of the state MDO if there's any cut in what we call the ED two seventy-nine, which is our state subsidy formula that shows how we get the hundred ninety thousand, ninety thousand dollars up to two different districts. You mind?
The fifty-five percent of the state is?
You bet.
How much are we going to actually give?
Uh, that's a state formula that they use, but there was a promise that the state would fund fifty-five percent of, of, of public education, and that goes back a few years down. And we've never seen fifty-five percent across the state. The one good thing is our state subsidy, which is nominal compared to our budget, nominal compared to some school districts across the state, did actually go up. Other, other communities, their state subsidy went down significantly, they're trying to find that at the local level by making cuts.
But how much are we actually giving?
Four percent from the state.
From the s-
It's not fifty-five percent, you know, it's an avoid.
Yeah, I don't know what our percent from the state actually is with our hundred ninety thousand state subsidy on the total state budget.
But it's also, it's also, you have to look at our local allocation grant, which is our spec grant, and our Title One, Title Two, that's also state money that also uses to offset our operating budget. So we have like ninety-eight thousand we get for local allocation, which helps cover a lot of our costs for special education. So I use a lot of that revenue to cover our out-of-district tuition and our out-of-district transportation, it helps cover our costs for extended school year, and it also covers our tutoring. I try not to use people because they, they like to charge a little more for me perks for that, so I avoid that and try to use it for, you know, out-of-district tuition, out-of-district transportation. Then we also have a title- Then we also have a Title One grant, which covers approximately seventy-five to eighty percent of our Title One teacher's complete salary. Um, and that, so that brings our budget down. We also get, um, it varies. Last year, we got about ten thousand dollars for, um, professional development, which we get later, which, that helps us with our teachers to do the training during summer or, you know, other times besides the school year. So all of these are in our, and on the federal level, we get approximately eighteen thousand, twenty thousand a year for, uh, small rural grant, which we use also to help offset, like we just had, um, we just had an author illustrator come to the school. We use it for extracurricular, maybe field trips that might be not in our operating budget, which also helps us, you know, provide more programs to the kids. And, um, so, and then our nutrition revenue is also federal and state funded. Um, so you have to look at everything, and I, I'll figure out the number for you, but I have to look at all the grants plus our nutrition reimbursements and what we get on the federal level, because all of that is part of the fifty-five percent. I know it's not fifty-five percent.
It's not fifty-five percent.
But, but I, give me, you know, I'll give you that number. I don't have it off the top, I have to figure it out for you.
We, Mark, we now can get a whole new year of school, not from Maria, that we can just move it on, post it, and just something there.
No, the thing that bothers me, we've been here twelve years, and we had, I don't remember what year that came in, but they sent somebody down from the government...
Yeah.
...to explain it to us. And they didn't take into account special education, they didn't take into account the nutrition system, they left all of this stuff out, and I said, oh, we'll, you'll be adding that in later on. And I know that there were years when the state subsidy averaged like sixteen percent, but Sanford was getting sixty-six percent.
Yeah.
And when I asked our esteemed representatives about it, the answer I got from Mr. Nass was, oh, you just don't understand how it works. And I never could understand why the school boards of the towns that were getting ready didn't get together and go up and pound on some doors, because, you know, fifty-five percent is fifty-five percent. And now they're arguing, the voters have to think if God, anybody has made over two hundred thousand, an extra three percent. And people can say what they want, but we have citizens who go far to everybody. And now it's been six months and one day, and claiming their residence down there, because Florida doesn't let you come back. Anybody that's spending a good portion of their time in Florida is now going to claim their residence down there. And why wouldn't that? If you're driving people away, and we're still not per se able to...
I will say this, though, there are, every single year, and it's already, people would argue, receive notification from main school management, that there are committees that are pushing on this fifty-five percent. There are people that are working on it in the legislature, every year, trying to get that number up where it's supposed to be, and they get shot down every year. But they are, there are, there's work on it right now going on, trying to get it back up to the fifty-five percent.
Okay, so our last piece really, with the explanation of the vote tonight, of the budget tonight, is one week from tonight, at seven PM here in the same location, here at the gym, we'll have our Acton School Budget Vote from the town. I also believe there's one other item on that agenda, uh, next week, that has something to do with the ambulance from the town as well. There'll be two agenda items, I assume, I'm assuming, I'm sure that we're going to be first for the school. We're first, and then, we're first, and then, and then we're going to do the ambulance vote after that, so. Make sure, and I'm going to be, just so this, this small community knows, I'm going to start, um, sending regular communications out to our school base, so I have the phone numbers, and I can get to the parents that have moved in rather quickly through Blackboard, and send a couple emails out, and a couple, maybe an attached voicemail, just to remind people of the vote, the time, and, and to try to get as much participation as we possibly can, um, that way as well. And I want to thank Judy and the school committee for getting the information out about tonight's budget meeting, I think that was helpful, uh, to announce and, and have people come in to hear how our budget is built. And thank one more time the school committee and the Warren Finance Committee for such a smooth process thus far. It's been a real pleasure, my first year working with all of you, so, thank you.
I wanted to commend you for this presentation, because it's made all the better than anything I have heard of twelve years.
Okay, thanks, Maria. See ya. Thank you. And, uh, Cam, you do a knock-up job of this stuff, so, thanks so much. Sure, but how about Julie?
I'm really excited to see the whole thing.
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about the...
Yeah, well, I mean, we've got a committee together to kind of do a design model of that, and after the vote, uh, a week from tonight, our hope is to post something, and then at the end, as we go through the school and hopefully the next eight weeks, is to try to figure out space, resources, grade levels. We're really looking at it as a pre-K through A opportunity. Um, matter of fact, today, Candy Davis, who's in charge of, is the team leader of the specials, which is music and art and the others, was asking me today about the schedule and how might the new foreign language impact the schedule finisher, what might that look like? So I have a well-designed committee to kind of take that on. Hopefully, we're going with Spanish, foreign language is going to be Spanish, because that feeds into, to every high school.
Eventually, will there be something else with the Spanish law?
I'm, I'm, no, I mean, the question, we're going to start with Spanish, because there's only two languages that are taught in the four years at Sanford High School, that's French and Spanish. And in looking at the research and working with the committee and the school committee, Spanish seemed to be the one that was a little more universal as a language for students to leave our school system with, as if they wanted to go on to Spanish one, two, three, or four at Sanford High School.
But you know, Spanish, there's as many African people coming in as we have, and then other South Americans, it's...
It's a universal language.
It's a second language.
Yeah. Yeah. And in our research, it was interesting, because there are certain dialects of Chinese that are really popular, but they're all in one place, they're all China. I mean, a lot of people who speak Chinese, but most of them are Lü Dian, so when we, when we got together, so we put those, the constumations, they think about four languages.
Yeah, they just say, in China, there are two major languages.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they, they have additional, the phones that they have, the five and one and the six and the other, and they can't understand each other, and the only way they, you know, how to say each other is through a little bit of language.
How about that?
It's the same way with French, French has to...
Yeah. Okay, folks, thank you so much for being on time. Awesome, thank you.
I want to do a journey.
Okay, I gotta write this down.
I love French.
So Mary?
It's a question to return by Mary, seconded by seven oh seven.